Good morning.
Good morning.
We will call to order the January 23, 2018, meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, it's my pleasure to invite Pastor Chanta Chim from the First Church of God up for the invocation. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Susan Adams.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father, God, we pause this morning to reflect on your goodness to us. We thank you for these dear servants of this city. Father, we pray that your mercy and your grace would be granted upon all that happens today in this city and in this meeting. Father, I pray for wisdom for your dear servants, that they may know how to govern, to lead, to serve the residents of this community. Father, what a privilege to recall Scripture, Jeremiah 29:7, that says, "But seek the welfare of the city, and pray to the Lord on its behalf; for in its welfare you will find your welfare." Father, that is the desire of these servants. That's why they've committed their life to public service and for meetings like this, that we can seek the betterment of this city. And we pray that all that happens today would be given grace, and that your hand would be upon these men and ladies, and all the meetings that will be conducted here, and in all the government offices. And Lord, we pray now, that there would be just a spirit of love, generosity, grace, and unity granted to all of us. And may all the things that be accomplished, may it bring us glory and closer to you. We thank you again for the privilege that we have to remember who it is that we can pray to, and that, God, you are the God of mercy, and that is what we ask for today for this city, as we continue to live and strive for peace and unity with one another. We thank you, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, of none God, individual.
Under additions and deletions to the agenda, Commissioners, you should have gotten some additional backup for item 8L. And then also, we've had a request from staff for an emergency addition to the agenda, item 12F1. This relates to a couple of bills pending that deals with access to the beaches and things like that. So staff, as requested, we add 12F1 to the agenda. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have an addition.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes, I'd like just to add sometime between 9:30 and 10:00, but closer to 10:00, a few moments, just to make an announcement.
Okay, that's fine with me. Commissioners, any?
Ms. Chairman, happy to move the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Slurry, second by Commissioner Flesher. All in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries 5-0. All right. Next is a proclamation or a presentation on our quarterly recycling update, January 2018. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. It's hard to believe that we're already at the first quarterly update. I don't know where this year has been going. As of October, we entered into our third year of single-stream recycling. If we take a look at the tonnages, we have, ah, there we go. Awesome. We take a look at our tonnages for this fiscal year. They fluctuate from month to month, but on average, we've had about 1,776 tons of recycling coming through our facility, which is just fantastic. When we were under dual stream, it was about 900 to 1,000 tons. Now, we're up to 1,700. So really, single-stream recycling, we have seen a lot more recycling coming through the facility. If we take a look at the last two years, again, this is comparing single-stream recycling, it has been increasing a little bit. So that's what we like to see. In 2016, 2017, it was about 1,734 tons of recycling coming through. And when we first started in October of 2015, it was about 1,400. So we're still seeing an increase. That's what we like to see. We're hoping to see this trend continue through the next quarters and also through the next couple of years.
Stephanie, could you go back to that, please?
Sure.
So, at your next quarterly update, quarterly update, could you quantify these numbers a little bit and say, look how many water accounts we have, or some reflection of how many homes are out in the community?
Okay.
And then give us a, you know, a pounds per household, or, you know, some kind of quantifying number like that? Because in my mind, you know, we have a lot of development going on, and a lot of homes are being built, which should add more tonnage, just by the fact that there's, you know, more people in the community. And I just kind of like to see what our, you know, pounds per household number is and how that fluctuates over time.
Sure.
So if you could kind of find a common denominator there, or something, or, you know, water bill accounts, or some metric like that?
Sure, yeah, we can see if we can find something like that. I think last time, it was, I looked, it was about 76,000 households, residential households around there. So we'll see how that number fluctuates and see if we can kind of connect that to the recycling tonnages.
Okay, great.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. So in November, last fall, we did our fall paper shredding event. We collected 17,000 pounds, almost 18,000 pounds' worth of paper. So with the paper shredding event, most of this paper was probably bound for the landfill because it is shredded paper. So that's just fantastic, seeing that being diverted from the landfill. We had about 563 cars come through. So this event, it's continuing to grow in popularity. We're continuing to see more folks coming through. Last year, we had about 450 cars at our last paper shredding, our last fall event. And our spring events are even bigger. So we'll continue to do these paper shredding events. This year has been really great. The one that's coming up very soon, we have one this Saturday, an electronics and household hazardous waste recycling event. So that's this Saturday. It's from 9:00 in the morning until 12:00 in the afternoon. It's going to be in the north part of the county. It's at the North County Pool. It's off County Road 512 in Sebastian. So if you are, if you have some old electronics, you've got some new things for the holidays this year, come and recycle your old things with us. We can, if you come and recycle with us, then you can enter into a raffle and perhaps win a new laptop. So again, that's this Saturday from 9:00 until 12:00 at the North County Pool, and I have some flyers out front at the entrance into the chambers, if you are interested. So please come and join us for that. During the holidays, we do see a lot more garbage in recycling. People generate a lot more waste, just because of all the things that we're giving and getting, and packages. So we always do a holiday recycling campaign, just reminding everyone, please recycle all of your wrapping paper. It's very recyclable. If you get packages and you get those packing peanuts in there, we cannot take those in the blue recycling cart, but you can bring them back to a UPS store. They will take them. That's usually where I go. Also, Packmales, the Keep Indian River Beautiful re-use center, will also take them. So make sure to recycle those packing peanuts. And one thing that we have seen as kind of a problem in the sorting facility is decorative lights. Those string lights, we do not want those in the blue recycling carts, along with the plastic bags. They do get wrapped up in the gears. They do cause some problems there. So if you have decorative lights and they still work, please donate them. If they don't work, either put them in the garbage, or bring them to our convenience centers. We can take them there. Our company will take them. And then our general recycling, it's always good to have a recycling message out there. We have our 30-second video ad that's airing on Comcast currently. We also have a poster at the AMC Theater. So if you go to the movie theaters, then we have some information about what can and can't be recycled, where you can go to get information. We have ads that come out in the Vero Voice magazine every month, and also the Vero Flash News email newsletter, which comes out every week. So recycling education, we're still out there. We're still letting people know what they can and can't recycle. But probably the most exciting thing that we have been working on, as the first quarter, we're preparing for the Indian River County School Recycling Pilot Program, which we did launch January 8th through the 12th. So I want to thank everyone who came out for that. We had Commissioner Flesher over at Pelican Island, along with Keep Indian River Beautiful. We had a number of Commissioners join us at Storm Grove Middle School. You can see Commissioner O'Brien working hard there with me at Storm Grove, and Commissioners Zork and Jason Brown. I don't know if you saw yourself in the paper, but in the Vero News, they had an article come out about this. The kids did really, really well. I was really impressed with how well they listened and how clean the recyclable material was. Everyone has just pulled together to make this just a wonderful, wonderful rollout. So I'll talk more, a little bit about that, the next quarterly update, but I at least wanted to mention it today. It really went wonderful, and I am so proud of everybody that was involved. Just a big, big thank you to all the volunteers from Waste Management that came out. We had folks from the county offices that came out. We had folks from Keep Indian River Beautiful that came out for it. Just the kids did great, and it was really a wonderful effort. So with that, if you have any questions about what we're doing in the recycling world, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioner, anything? Commissioner Slurry?
I've got one, Stephanie.
Sure.
You may not have the exact answer. I was just wondering if, given that our long-term goal is the 75% of all stuff recycled in five years, if you have a preliminary estimate of the amount, total amount that was recycled in the '16, '17 fiscal year?
Then I think that's, I'll let Hamachi handle that one.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm on Strumeth, the Solid Waste Disposal District. We are in the process of actually, it's by calendar year, is how DEP looks at it.
Okay.
So we submitted the 2016 data, and we're at 53%. We're gathering the 2017 data, and we'll, counties submit their initial information about what we recycle, the data that Stephanie's providing you. We submit our information to them by the end of this month. They get that from us, other counties, Publix, Walmart, things like that. They accumulate all that, and then a couple months, they send that back to us. And then we'll submit our annual report by end of April, so.
End of April?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Zork?
Two items. One, as I see our Public Works Director in the back, as we've been doing demolition on a number of structures, obviously, that C and D material, I don't know where it goes on those contracts, like the car wash we just tore down. We have a number of other buildings on 43rd that we'll be taking apart, but we need to always try to chase those numbers to see where they end up at. If they're going to Fort Pierce, we like to get the numbers booked, at least on this side, but we've got to get away and track the tonnages. Secondly, back to the school district one. I know at Storm Grove, they said their, this isn't going to be the right technical word, but the tray muncher machine that took, was out of service that day, or has been out of service for a while. Do they, because that, obviously, the trays would be 1,000 trays a day. So if that's not in operation, I don't know, that would change their numbers quite a bit if they were able to take the trays. I guess they, it shreds them and then cubes them or something. I'm not sure how the process worked, because it wasn't working that day. But have you heard if they've gotten that side of their, the machine was there, it just wasn't working? So I don't know if it needed to be repaired, and if that's, if they have one of those machines at all the schools, or just at Storm Grove?
Storm Grove has one. They use the Styrofoam trays. So essentially, what they do is they munch it. I'm not sure if that's a technical term either.
Right.
But they munch it all up, and they put it right into the dumpster. So it's kind of to help save space in their dumpster. It still does go to the garbage.
It does, okay.
It does. At Pelican Island Elementary School, they do have a composter there. They just, they have a machine. They're trying to get it up and running and get everything connected. So for them, they do have biodegradable trays that they're going to be using as soon as that's operational. And when they munch that up, then they will be composting that. So that will be out, that will not be going into the dumpster. So that's very, very new, and I believe Pelican Island is the first one to really try a composting program.
Okay. I'm sure they have a lot of material, if it works.
Yep. Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. Rich Barrett, Public Works Director. When we demolish the house, we look at the amount of material that's there. We've been hauling the clean concrete to our yard, so that we can crush it at the future, or we use it as reef protection. So we do look at that. We try to minimize what goes to the landfill as C and D. We try to recycle this concrete as much as possible when we do a demolition of any kind.
Okay. Can we take their estimated tons of, you know, if he says, hey, it's, looks like it's 100 tons of concrete, C and D, what kind of, how can we move that data from your ballpark estimate into the tracking numbers? I know we're getting actual tonnage numbers from Jenkins and Fisher and some of the other ones, but for kind of our internal stuff, or do we have to crush it after he gets it to the, kind of, the storage facility before we can count it?
That's correct. It has to be, it can't just be stockpiled.
Okay, it's got to be processed.
It has to be processed in order to be counted.
Okay.
So if we can track the numbers, and once they start processing, then we can, we can use that in our.
Okay.
And again, now, we're into 2018, so anything we do this year will be counted for 2018.
Right, okay. It all adds up. Thank you.
Commissioner Flesher?
The, yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. The machines that you're referring to, they have them at Pelican Island as well, but they're awaiting electrical connection. They're not in failure mode. They just have not been hooked up, and they were waiting for placement. And the program was starting and all planned, but I believe that, we were told that they will be hooking them up very quickly, because they're very anxious they're going to be, they anticipate being able to sell the mulch, or use the mulch in the gardens, so. I wanted to ask if there's any treatment in the recycling tonnage at the convenience centers, as opposed to what's happening at Curbside?
It's.
The amount that, or the relationship that's happening at the convenience centers, and what their percentages are, as opposed to what's happening at the Curbside?
We can, maybe next quarter, provide some information on the convenience centers. We do track the loads that are coming in from the convenience centers separately, so we can maybe, next quarter, bring you some information about the convenience centers.
So it can be done?
Yep.
I just wanted to know if there's something else that we can be doing at the convenience centers to increase those numbers, and basically, just to know what percentage is happening there would be a great canvas to start the process.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Hamachi and Stephanie, thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That takes us to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in December 19, 2017.
Approval.
I have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries 5-0. Information items, we have the Chairman and Vice Chair of the Development Review and Permit Process Advisory Committee. Consent agenda. Commissioners, anybody wish to pull anything from consent? Jason, do we need to pull L?
If we could pull 8L, because we need to add authorization for the chair to sign the work order.
Correct, right. Okay, so we're going to pull item L, and I would like to pull 8E. And then, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to have a consent agenda item pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Approval as amended.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second from Commissioner Zork. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. We'll go ahead and do E first. This is a roadwork network, a roadway network safety proposal for 12th Avenue. In the backup, you'll see that a lot of people come down 1st Street Southwest, heading eastbound, and there's a sharp curve, and then there's an Indian River Farms canal right there. In the last couple of years, there's been six or seven accidents where cars have just missed the curve and gone right into the drink. And so staff is proposing to close off 1st Street Southwest prior to 12th Avenue, and then construct a cul-de-sac, so that traffic coming down 12th Avenue will have an opportunity to turn around. And Rich, there's a couple folks in the audience from 12th Avenue here, and they had a question. Once we close off 1st Street Southwest and make 12th Avenue just a dead end, does that turn it into a private road, or does it still remain a public road?
Oh, it'll still remain a public road.
Okay.
We're just doing this for safety purposes.
Okay. So any maintenance cost, degrading, will still be the county's responsible?
The county will construct, construct a turnaround, can put the guardrail up where we can, and continue maintaining it as we always have been.
Okay, great. Anyone from the audience that has questions on this, or are you good now?
That's the question. I'm here for.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments or anything?
Move 8E.
I'll be glad to second that. We have a motion from Commissioner Slurry, second by myself. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 5-0. Item 8L, Jason, did you want to take this, or?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. We have 8L before you, which is Hurricane Matthew HMGP project. We're requesting that the board approve this project moving forward, and we've pulled this because we have an attached work order that needs to be signed, and we're requesting that, in addition to this staff recommendation, the board authorize the chairman to execute the work order.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Move staff recommendation and the signing of the work order by the present chairman?
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Slurry, second by Commissioner Adams. Is anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 5-0. We have no constitutional officer matters, so that takes us to public items, a public hearing. This is a public hearing for amendment to Section 103, amendment or repeal of ordinances of Chapter 100, general provisions of the Code of Indian River County. This is legislative in nature, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Ryan Golden.
Thank you very much. Pursuant to Section 125.68 of the Florida statutes, counties are required to maintain a current codification of all ordinances. Pursuing to this requirement, the county attorney's office has drafted the attached ordinance, which updates the current supplement number within our ordinance code. Attorney's office just simply recommends that the chair open up the public hearing for any comments, take any input from the public, close the public hearing, and then vote to adopt the ordinances presented. And with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Dylan, Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this item, under the public Seeing none, and having given ample time for public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
No public discussion items. We do have one public notice items. Mr. Rangel, would you do the honors, please?
Thank you very much. We have, as you noted, one public notice item. We have a public notice of a public hearing, which is scheduled for February 6, 2018. This will be to consider approving a special assessment project in connection with a water main extension along 103rd Court, from 88th Street to South 89th Street, within a portion of blocks E and H, Vera Lake Estates, subdivision Unit H3, which is located in Indian River County. Again, this will be a public hearing. This will be scheduled for February 6, 2018. Thank you very much, and with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Dylan? We have no county administrator matters. Under departmental matters, we go down to human resources. Approval to carve out pharmacy benefit and select new pharmacy benefit manager, effective May 1, 2018. And Ms. Suzanne Boyle, our human resources director, will take this one. Good morning.
Good morning. I come before you today with a mid-year proposal to carve out our pharmacy benefit. This proposal is at the recommendation of our benefits consultant, Lockton Companies. We engaged Lockton beginning in October. Actually, they came to work with us a little bit before that, free of charge, I might add. And we met, and we identified that we had some opportunities where we could make some substantial savings by carving out our pharmacy benefit from under our current medical provider, Florida Blue, and moving it out under a separate benefit provider, which would be through Express Scripts, and would be managed under RX Benefits, who would serve as an administrator of that program. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
So Susan, in the, Suzanne, in the backup, there's about, I think you said 94% of the, of our current pharmacy prescriptions will remain unchanged as far as a cost, it would be cost neutral to our employees?
Right.
And then there's a couple percent where it will actually be a cost benefit to the employees, because they'll go to a lower-cost co-pay?
That's correct.
Okay. And then there's about a 2% impact. There would be a negative impact to some employees for certain prescriptions, but I think I saw on the backup that there are alternative drugs that would, could replace those, that would.
Yes.
Offset that negative impact?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we would have an implementation process of about 90 days. RX Benefits and Lockton are very familiar with this type of a transition. It's routine to them, and they do have a complete transition plan. We will provide employees with information. We will identify those members who might be disrupted by having their prescription perhaps fall off the formulary, and we will have an outreach to them and provide them an opportunity to actually get the assistance that they need to transition to an appropriate formulary medication, so that they don't have any glitch in coverage.
Okay. Commissioner Slurry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The savings here is really pretty significant, and I was just wondering how you calculated it? Was it just basically taking all the medications which are charged in a certain period of time, and seeing what they would be if they were brought over to the new program?
Exactly. We actually took a six-month period of prescriptions, over 23,000 prescriptions, ran them through under the new PBM contract, which has reduced rates for the prescriptions, as well as increased rebates that come back to the plan for the high-cost medications. And so it was a comparison of that. And interestingly enough, currently, we're under prime therapeutics. We did not use the current cost. We used a renewal cost from prime therapeutics. So we compared what the renewal would be for prime therapeutics for that six-month period for those 23,000 medications versus the contract with Express Scripts. So there's, it was a very conservative number. There's actually more savings if you were, if we were to actually know what the cost was today, but we don't have entirely that transparency with our current PBM.
Again, that's, I think, everybody in the dais knows that healthcare costs are very significant for the county, and this type of savings is very welcome, so.
This really helps, because we're not changing any of the co-payments. We're not making a plan change. We're simply changing the PBM, the pharmacy benefit manager, and having better increased discounts, increased rebates, and better transparency. So I think this is really going to help us.
So I'd like to thank you and the group who worked with you on this, to bring the savings to the citizens of Indian River County.
You are most welcome.
Great job. Commissioner Zork?
Great, thank you. Also, thank you for continuing to look to find ways to save medical costs for both the county and for the employees. Question, on page number 97, or page two of the item, it's, second paragraph, Indian River County operates Lockton to proceed with obtaining PBM proposals, you know, et cetera, and it listed the four carriers. Will the employees be required to use any particular pharmacy providers as they go forward?
They have 67,000 pharmacy choices in the United States. In Indian River County, we have all of the major pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens, Publix, Target, all the big ones, as well as 13 independent pharmacies within Indian River County. So they have a very open network.
Okay. And the second question is, and maybe this can be shared, or maybe it can't be shared because of different rules, but I know if we get a prescription, A, I have younger kids, so we have a lot of the liquid antibiotics from time to time. What does, if I get that from pharmacy A, B, C, or D, if I knew which is the lower-cost provider to the county, I would tend to drive my business that way to save money, but I don't know the difference between the providers. And I bounce around a little bit of who I get them from, but if I, if we had some guidance And I bounce around a little bit of who I get them from, but if I, if we had some guidance of, to help even drive more savings, if eighty percent of our prescriptions that we filled are filled through a particular distributor type, it would even drive more savings, but I don't know how do we communicate that because at one pharmacy, this may be cheaper here, but at the other one, this item may be, maybe more. But if there's some guides, I know some, some providers probably charge more, some charge less, but if, if the employees knew, they may tend to shop at a place that costs the county less money to fulfill their side of the transaction.
And that's what I'm really excited about in partnering with RX Benefits and Lockton is that we will have access to more information than we've ever had before. If that detail is available, we would certainly pursue those opportunities to educate the employees on the more cost-effective way to get your prescription filled, not necessarily to the member because they pay the co-pay.
Right.
But to the plan.
Right.
And that's what we're speaking to, I think.
Right, exactly, yes.
And Commissioner Zork, to your point, I think we have to find a way to incentivize the employees to do that. Just for example, right now, Publix is offering a ten-dollar gift card if you get your flu shot there. Now, I have no idea, but the Publix flu shot may be very expensive to our plan.
Right.
But to the employee, I think they're just going to see that ten-dollar gift card and not think about the cost to the plan. So unless we have some type of incentive, like the end of the year, you know, give some type of cash back or some type of reward to the employees for choosing the plan over their own pocketbook, I think they're just going to go to the cheapest deal that's out there without
Right.
considering the plan. So we need to.
And there's opportunities perhaps for incentives. One of the other things is when we talk about savings, just the fact that we're saving the plan means that we are saving every member future money that we might have to kick in for next year's premiums if we don't work collectively to save the plan because the plan is us.
Right.
And the plan is all of our dollars going into those premiums. So it might be a combination of both, but we certainly want to work to educate the members and the insureds on the most cost-effective way to use these benefits.
And then Suzanne, could you, assuming the board's going to go with this, and then so could you reach out to those two percent that are impacted on the negative side as soon as possible and make sure they're good? You know, I know when we did the deferred comp plan, there was a lot of concern on employees.
Right.
So if we move this forward, if you could prioritize reaching out to those folks and make sure they fully understand and are up to speed on it as quick as we can.
Exactly. And we'll communicate to employees, we'll work with RX Benefits and Lockton to begin that process immediately. In fact, I know there's been a lot of preparation just for them to be ready to go and get into the implementation process, so we absolutely will.
Okay. And I think we have someone from Lockton here?
Michael Meredith.
Okay. Thank you very much for your efforts here. Commissioners?
Move approval as presented. Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, second from Commissioner Zork. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne, looking forward to the savings there.
So me too.
Next, under department matters is Office of Management and Budget, the chambers audio and visual video upgrade. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Michael Smikowski, Indian River County Budget Director. I'm here today to address replacement of the audiovisual equipment here in the county commission chambers. By way of history, in two thousand and seven, our original contract with Audiovisual Innovations or AVI for the board chamber audiovisual equipment and wiring was approved at a cost of just slightly in excess of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. That was an analog system format, which is the format that was in place at the time. Fast forward to two thousand and sixteen, following Hurricane Matthew, some of the equipment was damaged during the storm and we did no difficulties in finding replacement equipment as analog equipment is no longer being manufactured. We purchased used replacement equipment. We do have some workarounds that are already in place that result in some broadcast quality issues. You've got cameras freezing up when you use the computer display. Here, the displays to the monitors are displayed out to the broadcast universe through a camera rather than through the switching gear. So you have an analog camera circa two thousand and seven quality, which results in broadcast quality issues to the end user out in the public. You also have some issues with the display monitors here in the boardroom. Our concern ultimately is that if we had a catastrophic failure and the inability to purchase replacement equipment, that we would be, have an inability to broadcast the commission meetings for an intermittent period until we could get the equipment replaced. As such, we initially reached out to vendors in two thousand and seventeen to get quotes to update the equipment. The nature of this work, though, is fairly specialized. There are AVI and Encore Broadcast Solutions or EBS are the two principal players with locations in Florida. AVI is out of Tampa. EBS is out of Altamont Springs. Our initial sole respondent was Encore Broadcast Solutions. They provided excellent support following the hurricanes. They've also done work in rebuilding our server rack up in the control room for broadcast purposes to ensure our ability to broadcast via Comcast. Recently, as we've experienced greater issues with equipment and our concerns are a little more heightened, we reached out again. AVI and EBS both responded. A local firm did not respond in terms of quotes received. AVI initially responded through a TIPS contract. It's the inter-local purchasing system. It's essentially a piggyback arrangement that's led by educational agencies in Texas. However, after comprehensive review by the purchasing manager, it was determined that the bulk of items quoted were not actually priced on the TIPS contract and therefore we could not use that as a piggyback arrangement. AVI also submitted a quote for the standard system upgrade, but also some kind of state-of-the-art features, monitors with integrated speakers and the like that were fairly expensive and we felt were beyond probably what we needed here following the function over form. The monitors themselves, I believe, were in the range of thirty-five hundred dollars a piece because they had integrated speakers and obviously if you incur any issue with either the monitor or the speaker, you're looking at replacing the whole piece. So they also then were given an opportunity to give an open market quote that came in at two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand eight oh six ninety-nine. EBS's quote was two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-twelve thousand four twenty-three forty-five, which included three years of maintenance. That was the lowest quote. Some additional work that is desired as well, the building department has needs for their training efforts. They're looking at a projector, a drop-down screen and associated wiring. The building department would pay for that equipment and installation. That would be via a separate quote. Because of the nature of a drop-down screen, we would have to have a structural engineer evaluate the connection points on where that would be to ensure obviously safety and integrity of that installation. For continuity of operations and maintenance, staff is recommending that that work be done by the same contractor. Obviously, if you have wiring up in the, in the ceilings and the like, you would want to have a sole contractor performing that work in the event you had some operational or maintenance issues. You don't want to be in the situation of two vendors pointing at each other saying, no, it's their install versus our install. So staff is recommending the following, that we waive the bid requirements. The principal players that have responded throughout the life of this system have been AVI and EBS. We're requesting that you authorize staff to issue a purchase order to Encore Broadcast Systems for the upgrade of the commission chambers AV system at a cost of two-hundred-and-twelve thousand four twenty-three forty-five. And then finally, further authorize the county administrator to issue a purchase order to EBS for supplemental work, the projector screen and associated installation, once a separate quote has been obtained for that work. And again, community development, i.e. the building fund, would be paying for that work as that would be largely for their individual training needs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Just in terms overall, I guess I'd say too, I asked Adam, you know, the difference between the analog format versus the digital format? The wiring's changed, all the connections to monitors have changed, and you're really going from kind of VCR-age technology to Blu-ray player technology. So the end result, in addition to having, ensuring continuity of operations would be much better acuity in terms of the visuals that the end user will see and certainly we've gotten more than our typical life out of a system of that nature, which was originally, again, installed in two thousand and seven.
Thank you. Commissioner Slary?
Yes, Mike, this is pretty expensive for this type of change, so I was wondering if you could quantify, how much better will this make us look up here?
There's no technology that will do that.
You'll have to make sure you do your hair.
Beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so.
So you're telling me this doesn't have real-time photoshoppability? Oh dang.
You know, when Commissioner Adams got elected, we all started looking better, but.
Yeah, I understand. I thought we'd keep on improving it.
She can only carry us so far, you know.
It is expensive, but actually it is, you know, the original.
Maybe I'm just asking too much out of technology, okay.
The original boardroom equipment install was two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, so we're looking at two-hundred-and-twelve for replacement equipment. So over time, technological advances have actually come down in price. The price for the install has gone up, but the technological pieces themselves have come down.
That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for those insightful and thoughtful questions. Commissioner Zork?
Yes.
I hope you can do better than Commissioner Slary.
I think so. So what, what in this room would be different? What would the viewer see other than clear, happy faces on that side of the room? I look at two-hundred-plus thousand dollars and I'm thinking, what, what else do we need for that same type of money that, it's just a lot of money to, to deal with? And then secondly, was this in our planning budget from last year? I don't remember it, but it could have been.
No, sir. We would be funding it from cash forward in our optional sales tax and that has been reviewed by the clerk's office as an eligible expense from that funding source.
Okay. And then on the question of what, what would be different in this room and then what would the, is it all just the viewer and that they would see? So everything in here would be the same or what all's going to be different in here?
The main things that would be different in the rooms would be the cameras. We're going from a standard def camera to a high-definition camera. The monitors on the walls are going to be bigger and thinner. The monitors that you have are going to be widescreen. And then the end result that the viewer's going to see is going to be in a digital format versus analog, the way it is now, and it's going to be a sixteen-by-nine aspect ratio versus the square that's currently being broadcast. So Comcast, when they send it back to the viewer, it's not going to be high-def, but it's going to be digital. So there will be a huge improvement as far as visually what you see, it's going to look a lot better.
And functionally for the viewer at home, you know, besides getting to see our pretty faces so much better, sometimes when there's a PowerPoint presentation, when you look at it at home, it's harder to read the letters and the numbers unless they're pretty large font, so some of the information will be easier to read for the viewer at home.
It'll be displayed through the switching gear rather than through the camera at the back of the room currently, which obviously degrades the quality of what the end user sees at this point.
The bulk of the equipment's going to be upstairs
Okay.
in the control room, where we process the signal and send it out to Comcast. That's going to be the majority of it. But in this room, cameras and screens and switching equipment that we're going to have in here, that's going to be changed out as well.
Okay. And then secondly, with, I notice when, when I look at other counties, some of the, if I want to look at a topic on the train and I go to their agenda and click on it, it takes you right to the video clip of that. And I don't know if Granicus has that type of, will this system kind of bundle all that together in a better fashion?
I believe that's what we're doing now.
Granicus does have that ability since we've gone to Granicus. If you just click on the item, it will pull up that video to that point. You don't have to go searching for, you know, item twelve F one or whatever.
Okay. I watched the whole hour and a half to get the three minutes that you need.
Exactly. You can get to what you want to see if you click.
Right. And the last thing is I noticed in, in Brevard County, I think when a commissioner speaks, they push a button, a light comes on, the chairman knows, and that somehow changes the recording format of the system. And I don't know if we're, would be looking at that. I'm fine with the way it is, but for some reason they, Brevard, and I think Volusia may have that where you'll, if you watch the meeting, the chairman will say, I see we have a light on for so-and-so, and I don't know if that's for recording of the documents or transcribing, but it segments the conversations for some purpose. I don't know exactly what it is, or maybe it's just how they keep everybody in line. Can't talk unless you get the, you know, the happy stick to talk.
I have heard of that system, but I think we're more looking at having an open mic system
Okay.
to where we can control the volume as we do now. If you're too close, I can lower it. If I can't hear you, you can raise it up. The only thing I can't do is when you forget to turn it on. I have no control to actually turn the mics on. So going forward, we would like a system to where the microphones are on, but I can still control the levels to make it sound good. But I think the system you're referring to is just, it, it kind of shows who's next in line to speak kind of thing.
Right. I didn't know what other, to me, it seems cumbersome because then you have all these light bulbs blinking for the chairman to keep track of, so I, but I tolerate it if there was some public benefit to it, but I haven't understood it yet.
You can always go non-visual and maybe have like a stun button.
Don't really do that if I have an override switch, I can turn that light off. Commissioner Adams?
To me, this isn't really about the, I mean, the quality, that's an extra benefit, although I will have to make sure I do my hair better. The blur helps me. But really, it's about the equipment because the equipment is no longer being made, so that means if it breaks, parts aren't available. So what staff would have, has had to do and will have to do in the future if we were to stick with the system, is find something off-market, purchase it and then harvest the parts from it. So that could possibly lead to us not being able to broadcast or be able to use any audiovisual in this room, which, there's other meetings that occur here, which it could really impact that. So I know it's a big amount of money, but I think in the long run, it's just going to provide that continuity that we need to do our job.
It's an investment that you're going to have to make every ten to fifteen years. We've gotten certainly long life out of this system and have used it to, to the extent possible, but I'd say it's nearing the end of its useful life and we do not want to be in the position of having an emergency where obviously we could not broadcast, so we don't want to be put in that position.
Commissioner Fletcher? Well, and agreed, Mr. Chairman, I believe that Commissioner Zork and Commissioner Adams, I agree that it's a little unsettling to have to spend money on cameras, but I believe that operationally, we have to have a mechanism in order to broadcast to the public. And I was just thinking back as to, the only thing that's missing here is the unfunded mandate from the state regarding the supervisor elections had to purchase all-new equipment because of the lack of serviceability of the current equipment. And it's something that has to be done for the greater good of the public. I know we've had a little fun about talking about, you know, making anybody look good or not, but I think it's about service and reliability. But it still sets me back a little bit to have to spend a few hundred thousand dollars on cameras.
I still wish it made us look better.
Just be careful if it's HD, you're going to. Just be careful, if it's HD, you're gonna... You might not want...
Adams' work wonders with the current equipment. I just can imagine, be given new equipment, maybe it'll make you look great.
Well, I think we probably spent as long on this item as we got to.
Yeah, I got one, two things, actually.
Make staff... Or move staff recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Adams.
Happy to second it.
Second from Commissioner Flory under discussion. I have a very important technical question here. So if we're getting new screens, are we gonna get the John Madden screens where we can draw on it and it'll show up? We've been wanting those for a long time.
Well, you have.
That might get us some more.
Yeah. And one of... Kudos to Jennifer Hyde, our purchasing manager, for digging into the original quote, not going with the piggyback. That saved us somewhere around 40,000 or more, I think. So Jennifer, thank you for doing that research. I appreciate the savings. And then, Mike, I just have one question. Staff recommendation is for us to go ahead and approve authorizing the county administrator for the purchase order for the additional equipment. Any idea what that equipment might cost? I'm a little hesitant, you know, if it's gonna be like 100,000, I'm a little hesitant to pre-approve something without seeing it come back to us.
No. We're thinking in the 20 to 25,000 range, unless we encountered some unusual circumstance with the structural engineer relative to the dropdown. And if that got cost prohibitive, they might decide not to do it, but...
Okay.
Because the county administrator only has a certain amount of approval authority anyway.
If it looks like it's gonna get out of whack, could you bring it back to us?
We'll bring something back if it's beyond that 20 to 30,000 number for sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Fleischer?
One other question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
As far as what we see now, that we lose that and there'll be dropdown?
No, sir. You would have... There're gonna be replacement monitors that will be of a larger scale, so that would be an improvement. But they're looking... Community development does a number of training programs, and what they do, they have a projector that they basically...
It's set up with PVC pipe, and it's basically like an eight-foot projector they place right here in front of the dais. And they have a projector, a VGA projector, that they shoot at it. What we're looking at is putting a dropdown screen right behind where the drywall ends and the... There's a gap right there. A dropdown screen with a 4K laser projector that's mounted on the wall back there. And that is for... They have seminars a couple times a year in here, where they bring in, you know, a couple hundred people. It's something to do with building codes and whatever they do. But it should improve that. And you... Quality-wise, there's no mistake in to go with a 4K projector versus analog. It's going to help a lot for what they do.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on the motion before us?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. If you'd come to the podium and give... Name an address for the record, please.
I don't have a dog in the fight, but I'm used to budgeting.
Sir, you're naming addresses for the record?
I'm sorry. I'm Jay Berkloo, 2455 Pine Avenue, Vera Beach. If you're... My understanding, you're gonna do digital, but not HD?
It will be high-definition cameras, but Comcast is not gonna broadcast that back in high-definition.
Because you're hitting a 10-year technology curve now of what was state-of-the-art back 10 years ago. What would be the cost difference, and would it give you longevity for this buy to last 15 or 20 years if you went ahead and jumped up to a little higher technology?
We are...
Just a question.
Yeah, we're putting in the... Probably the best technology that we can. It's just the signal that Comcast sends back to the viewer. They're not gonna waste their bandwidth over on these channels.
So I think we'll have the ability to... What the product we're producing will have that, but when it's put out on Comcast, it just won't be at the HD level.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Flory. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 5-0.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have under Public Works, item 12 F1 that we added this morning as an emergency item. And Mr. Gray?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Adams had wanted something between 9:30 and 10:00. I didn't know if we've got enough time to finish this item.
Oh, okay. No, I think we're... Yeah, you're...
Okay.
Good morning, James.
Good morning. James Gray, County Natural Resources Manager. We wanted to bring to the board's attention two bills that are going right now in the 2018 legislative session. Senate Bill 804 and House Bill 631 that deal with customary use of the beaches. Also, the importance around this, Kate Cotner, our Assistant Attorney, is actually up in Tallahassee right now. So, you know, that's the reason for bringing this to the board right now. The consideration of the board is for the board to approve the chairman to sign a letter of opposition of this proposed regulation. So in explanation, customary use sections of this... These proposed bills could prevent the public from transversing beaches, county beaches and such. So essentially, the ownership of the beach goes from the dune down to mean-high water. The... From mean-high water seaward is under state sovereign lands. So what has happened in some communities, the restricted use of that private portion of the beach was barricaded in Walton County and so forth. So by restricting that use, the public has limited access to the state sovereign lands. So this legislation, or these bills, again, would prevent the county from... With our beach programs and other communities as well, and the state that have active beach programs that fund the programs with state dollars and county dollars, this would restrict, again, the public from accessing that section of the beach if it were to be barricaded. So we have, again, in the backup, there's a letter of opposition, which staff strongly opposes this type of legislation. It's also been supported by our Beach Committee. It was discussed yesterday. Unanimous approval of submitting a letter, and the direction of the Beach Committee was to have the chairman, Mike Ochsner, sign the letter, or co-sign a letter with the commission chair, again, opposing this language.
Is that, James? I noticed that the letter's only addressed to two senators. Is there... Has the bill been referred to a House committee yet?
It's currently...
It's actually gone through the... I think it's the Civil Subcommittee, and it's now actually pending in the Judiciary Committee.
On the House side or the Senate side?
On the House side, but let me check real quick.
Okay, just... My only comment is, if it's still going to become before a House committee, shouldn't we send this to the chair and vice-chair of that House committee?
And that is correct, and we're working with Kate. In fact, Kate and I have been talking about who else to send this letter to as well, and that will be addressed, as well as some comments. The letter may be updated, or will be updated, based on some comments from the Beach Committee, and also if the commission has any comments as well that we can add to this letter, including who to address it to.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of James? Commissioner Fleischer?
No. Mr. Chairman, yesterday at the Beach and Shore Committee meeting, this was full and As a matter of fact, the... Many of the members, including myself, had brought up that this should have as much bite as possible. They wanted the language to be strengthened, enhanced, and to include many... Although it does contain discussion, a brief discussion on our Turtle program. And as far as renourishment, they wanted it to be as bold as possible. I believe that that was unanimous. And many great suggestions were made that Mr. Gray had heard as well. This has tremendous ramifications, and in addition, I think that it should be sent to anybody who knows how to read. We were very setback at the fact that because of a little skirmish in the panhandle, that we are about to lose home rule and suffer greatly. And much of the great work that James and the staff are doing will be basically thwarted. So we... The committee has... And I see there's a committee member here, that the committee strongly urged that the language be as strong as possible.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I don't know why we're shy. I'm happy to move the item. I think it's important.
I'll second the motion from Commissioner Flory. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this? Mark, are you good?
You know...
Come up.
If you can. I don't think I can stand up right now.
Can we move that there? I checked last night... I can't hear my barroom whisperer. What are they gonna do? I checked last night, and this bill they're passing, they don't think it'll go through the Senate. The House is pushing it, and they've attached it to several other bills that... And the people I talked to were scared to say anything, because they figured their funding would be cut. So y'all need to talk to your lobbyists up there and find out the scoop on this. Personally, I don't think we need anybody in Tallahassee telling us what to do here.
Thank you.
I think you'll get unanimous consent on that.
Yeah. You know, it's paradise, and they wanna screw it up. So they do this, and the next thing they'll wanna take away are limited... Going up in the air with buildings, I saw in paper here a week or two ago, that that was part of Tallahassee's deal. They wanted everybody to have high rises.
Okay. For the audience listening at home, that was Mark Tripsin, who is a member of the County Beach and Shore Advisory Committee. That's okay, Mark. We're good. So we do have a motion from Commissioner Flory, second by myself. Anyone else from the public wish to comment?
I'll just note, I mean, there's... In what's happening in Tallahassee, they seem to be using every opportunity to limit home rule. For the little bit I can tell about this item here, for the Walton Beach area up in the Pensacola, this ought to have been, at best, a special bill, a special act, which would actually address the needs of that location, which would if the citizens of that location actually wanted it. So there are tools available in the legislature to deal with these type of things, but for some reason, in the last couple of years particularly, every time there's a small problem or somebody has a small issue, they're taking out the big guns, which in the end have incredible collateral damage, undermine home rule, and will have impacts much greater and more deleterious than the legislators in Tallahassee have a clue about. So this is the type of thing which we all on the dais know, I think, but I think our citizens need to realize, we need to be fighting continuously and probably will.
Very good. Well said, Commissioners. Flory. So we have a motion and second. All in favor signify with aye.
Can I clarify for a second? I heard a couple comments about adding House members and strengthening the letter. Do we want changes, or was the motion just going as is?
I think James said that there would be some changes, and I think the motion maker would agree that it should go to whoever we think is appropriate at that time.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Yeah, that's staff's understanding, that we would add whoever needs to be added, and then make some changes to the language, keeping the spirit of the letter the same, but maybe strengthening it per the Beach Committee's recommendations.
And Mr. Ochsner did say very clearly that he would sign any resolution or document in the strongest sense.
Okay. So all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you, James. Mark, thank you for coming this morning. Departmental matters, utility services, sole source for Landia Inc. Morning, Vinnie.
Good morning. For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. This is a sole source request for Landia. They produce some mixers. They're an OEM, original equipment manufacturer. Staff is in the need to replace two mixers, one at our central wastewater plant, the other at our south regional wastewater plant. Attached to the backup is a sole source letter from Landia, the OEM, equipment manufacturer. So we're here to ask the board to do a couple things. One is to approve Landia as a sole source for their mixers, to waive the requirement for bids, and to authorize the Purchasing Division to issue a purchase order to Landia in the amount of $29,264, again, for two mixers. These are over 17 years old. They provide a little longevity than the AVI equipment in a more aggressive environment, and certainly are available for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions of Vinnie?
Move staff recommendation?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Flory, second from Commissioner Adams for staff recommendation. Is anyone in the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 5-0. Thank you, Vinnie. Commissioner Adams, we're in the Commissioners Matters now, and you asked to be added, so I think we'll just go ahead and take your item now under Commissioner Susan Adams Matters.
Fantastic. Thank you. It is my pleasure, now that we are after 10 o'clock, to announce that Vera Beach has been nominated as one of Coastal Living's happiest seaside towns. They have been nominating... Nominated along with nine other towns, vying for the title of 2018's happiest seaside town. What we would ask the community to do would be to go to coastalliving.com/happytowns2018 and vote for Vera Beach as the number-one happiest seaside town. You can vote once per minute, so if you're bored and you're at home, just keep on voting. Up to, you know... You can vote for two weeks until February 6th is when those votes will be tallied. So help us be number one, and the chamber's worked really hard on this, and we're excited about it. So congratulations, and we'll see how the voting goes.
Very good. Jason, do you think we could put the link on our webpage, please?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay. And I assume that the city of Vera Beach is taking a similar path or action?
Second, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Who we're in competition with, the other...
They were announcing all the... We got a little bit of forward information as far as the nomination for Vera, but they didn't release the other names until they had... Released a press release at 9:30, and then we were able to announce after that around 10 o'clock. So I'm sure if we go online, we can see, but I don't know the other towns. But I would venture to guess they are nowhere near as happy or awesome as we are.
No, we are happy.
Especially these county commission meetings are pretty happy.
Really.
I guess Sebastian wasn't in the running, because they still have that sign-up of the grumpy folks.
Grumpy old six-year-old grumps, yeah.
Real stigma.
But a great place.
Commissioner Zork, welcome entry signs at key locations in Indian River County. You have the floor, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things we're gonna do on this. This was kind of prompted from a phone call I had with Jay Berkloo, and I'm gonna have him come up here in a minute. But, you know, we had some discussion back a year or so ago regarding signage at entry points in the county, and we moved some things forward. And Jason, can you kind of give us a little update of what you shared with me yesterday that we do have some things in motion?
Sure, yes. If you'll recall, the genesis of that was some discussion about landscaping needs along US-1. The portion down at the south end of the county that was widened a few years back, there had been some complaints about the lack of landscaping, and there was talk of adding an entry sign at the south county line there. At that time, the board then had a discussion about entry signs at all of the entry points to the county, and gave staff some general direction to place some signage at the various entry points north and south on US-1. I think the two I-95 exits and potentially State Road 60 at the west end of the county were discussed. Staff has been moving forward with landscaping plans. We awarded a design, I think, to Kimbley Horn to do the landscaping plans at the... At that section of US-1 at the south end of the county to include an entry sign there. And there is a grant that we're applying for this spring for that project. And then we would think that the style of sign that's approved there would be used at the other locations throughout the county. So that's generally where we are on the sign issue.
Do we have anything on the theming or the look of the sign? And I know when we did the economic review with adding associates, we didn't do a logo for the county, but there was some type of theming branding that could be kind of tied in, big picture, through, you know, a number of different areas to try to all be on the same page, at least at... same page, at least in some type of an appearance?
Yes, Rich Perga, Public Works Director. We do have some slides, a short PowerPoint presentation of what we have. Our intention was to bring this to the board back in, in March for your input as far as what the signs look like. We'll just go ahead and, we'll just go ahead and show you what we've got so far. There's two design options. One of them, as you see here, is a sign that'll have different veneer, different types of structure, as you'll see in a minute, go to the second one. Then we have design two. What we did with this one is, that's the, we, we put a river in the, in the sign. So basically, it kind of splits the county, you got mainland, you got the, the riverside. Just kind of, it's different. So these are the two options we've got. Keep in mind, these need to be breakaway signs, they're gonna be in DOTs right away. They need to be able to be destroyed if a car hits them, so it's not too dam, it's a, it's a safety issue. So we are looking at, it's basically gonna be plywood stucco, styrofoam stucco type of construction. Go ahead. So we've got three types of finishes right now. We've got the field stone finish. It sets off the sign a little bit, it's a little darker color, and you can get that in, in stucco finish. Then we've got just a brick cobblestone finish. We see that around in some of the other signs that are available. And then we've got just a standard stone type finish. The sign's pretty much the same in all three of them, depending on which, which version we choose. That's basically what we have right now. It's part of the landscape, as Jason said, it was originally part, the first sign was gonna be part of the landscaping upgrades on US-1, and then once we saw this one and got it established, we were gonna go ahead and start looking at installing them at other locations as directed by the board. The cost of these signs, about 20 grand each, as it stands right now. We're looking at lighting will be solar lighting. Power is very hard to get at these locations, and it's just, it's not feasible, cost feasible to do so, so we believe that power, solar lighting, we'll be able to use some solar lighting in this area.
Rich, do you need us to make a decision now on the, which sign and which finish, or can that be something down the road?
We, we don't need a decision now, if you'd like to, sure, but we're looking into this. I've got, Andy's been looking around, so some different styles. These are the styles that we've come up with, that we, what we think are, are good for the county, but again, you can make a decision now, or if you got suggestions, we can look at those, too.
I think, just, Commissioner Flory would think is, maybe Andy, if you could print all five, or six versions of, three of each sign on one page or something, or two pages, and give us a little time to look at them, then we'll...
Absolutely.
...come back and pick the one we like.
Mm-hmm. We can do this.
Is the, is the blue line representative of the Indian River? Is that what you were going for?
Yeah. Just kind of offsets the...
The, and I'll have Jay come up here in just a second. If we could also include some way of getting input or review of, of what was talked in the, the branding concept with the Addy report, I don't know if it was using a particular font style, or something in trying to keep some similarity in some of the other efforts that, that were part of that work that was done, just to get, you know, not to, to include them versus, like to hear what their comment might, might be on that. And I don't know which, whether we go through Helene on that, or somebody look at it and say, does this seem to match up with some of the things that were brought up in, in that work product that Addy and Associates had did for us? Secondly, if Jay, if you want to come up, the, the conversation I had with Jay was he had some ideas on maybe some funding options, and then he also had some design options. We're not gonna necessarily get into that, but he had come forward and said the possibility of, of doing some efforts to raise some funds to help. I don't know if it's in the realm of possibility of getting grants for all those, or if private dollars would help move the process along a little quicker, but I'll turn it over to Jay, and he can kind of share what some of his ideas are.
Jay Berkley, as I said before, 2455 Pine Avenue. I actually brought this up, like, almost three years ago to Wesley, and helped get the ball rolling, then it kind of died out. But my idea was a little grander than their planning, and what I'd proposed, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, was almost if you've traveled I-95 going into South Carolina, and you go over the, from Georgia to South Carolina, it looks like you're entering a plantation. They've got like a grand wall and landscaping, and welcome to South Carolina, and a flag. I was thinking about that on the I-95 and the State Road 60, and then maybe some large signs that are a little more fun. Like I just visited Ocean City, New Jersey, and they've got almost a mini billboard that shows the beach and all kinds of fun stuff and buildings and the crest, that basically, it's kind of funny. It's, the way in, it's a big welcome, and the way out is thanks for coming, and, you know, subtext, I hope you left some money. And, which was, it was kind of a, a fun part of it, but to really make it stand out, in addition to having the neat signs that kind of gain attention to everybody coming up, up and down I-95, coming in the county, is, will help a lot of folks from tourism to business to everything else, is also cleaning up the entire roadway if we use the prisoners or what have you, so that the entire stretch of I-95 and State Road 60 already looks pretty good because it's new. It hasn't degraded like some of the other roadsides, because they just did that, so it's nothing to keep that up. But it makes our county look a lot better. I don't know if you've been through Palm Coast, but when you go through that entire section, you feel like you're in, you know, Royal Palm Beach, because it's very heavily well-maintained, and it's not that it's heavily labored, is they just made it to where it was easy maintenance and low-maintenance trees and solar lights and that kind of thing. So what I was originally proposing was a public-private thing, where maybe we can get some of the, you know, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or some of the business leaders to, you know, help offset the cost of the signs, because the initial investment is the big part, the maintenance, whether we do this sign or what I'm proposing will be a little bit, not, not that big a difference. And I'd be happy to help out as liaison. I, I helped build the Berdery Fountain downtown in Vero, that actually was dedicated in honor of my father. So I've done a lot of other things where we built stuff and donated it to the county. So if there, I'd be happy to consult, do whatever again, but I, my hope was, is to really make it where you're coming into River County, even if you're driving through thinking you're moving to Florida, you might turn around and go, God, that place is gorgeous. You know, maybe we should stop, or, you know, to coordinate with the cities, so at 60 and 512, you know, Felsmere and Sebastian can come up with a sign that's in the same genre, saying, you know, come visit us in Felsmere, you know, stop in Sebastian, which will maybe encourage people that are driving, go, God, that looks like a good place to stop. You know, maybe we should get gas and grab a bite to eat. But it's more to drag people in to make it look spectacular when you hit our county. And I think that can be accomplished without spending a lot of money, if you set it up correctly in the first place.
Commissioners, any comments or questions? Jay, I, I remember a year ago, we drove to South Carolina, and you're right, when you hit that line, it's like about a mile of, of landscaping and things like that. So it is something you do notice.
I did contact South Carolina DOT. My cousin happens to be in, one of their administrators, so I asked her about it, and she says that the DOT workers go and touch that monument twice a year. They run around there and, you know, do a little quick trimming, but they set the entire thing up to be basically zero maintenance. So they'll go and grab a few things, throw some mulch down, and, I mean, there's no real flowers, there's some flowering plants, but it's very low maintenance, and it looks spectacular when you come across, then you're like, boom, I'm in South Carolina, I'm in, you know, it, it makes a big presence, and that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And, you know, I agree with him on the breakaways on that and the solar lighting, and I've done the solar lighting on some of my other projects, but, you know, I think it could be interesting, I think it'd help our county.
Okay. Commissioner Flory?
I'd be happy to discuss the idea further, but it's, it's really preliminary at this point.
Right.
So I'd suggest a couple of things. One is, it sounds to me, if I understood you right, that you'd have one type of, same theme sort of sign, but the signs would be differentiated between the one that gets off at Vero Beach and the one that gets off up in Sebastian, Felsmere.
Well, what I do, each end of the county would have, like, you're coming into South Carolina, same thing, western 60. You've got the room there to do the large monument tile, but when you go off on Sebastian, you can sit there and have a similar theme, but have Sebastian and Felsmere kick in and say, listen, you know, because you're getting off there.
So my point is, with those two, you really ought to get with both the municipalities and the chambers of Indian River County.
I'd be happy to.
Well, I mean, and then come up with a real proposal. I would rather not delay anything along A1, US-1, particularly given that the people in the south county have been waiting a long time for both the landscaping and the monument up there, and just, I don't think there's any room for anything bigger than there, and probably not in the north county. And so I'd like to see us go ahead with the, at this point, both the entryway signs at the north and south part of the county along US-1, and give Mr. Berkley some time, if he wants to, to come up with a firmer proposal.
Actually, you're planning on doing a monument style like this on US-1 coming in to the county?
On the north end, yeah.
Okay. Did you, where would you put it? Because I actually, whether yesterday, kind of scape it out in preparation.
It's tough to find a place the DOT will accept. We've still gotta look at that.
My question on that is, is thinking of a different thing. That looks great and all, but if you came up with like almost an elevated sign, which isn't as, as hard, it's, it's still a bit almost like the pole billboards we've got, but a little bit different, because you're gonna need to elevate it so anybody can see it, and make it a little bit larger. Maybe thinking of something a little different, because you'd have to do the same thing coming in A1A, north and south, and US-1, north and south, because you're coming in a bridge both ways. Maybe rethinking those a little bit, and it'd also be substantially less expensive than 20 grand, and it would look a lot better. And it's something that you could reface, say, in five, six years, if it looked bad, you can strap, you know, you can basically have another sign made up for a couple grand, and you've got a fresh look.
Commissioner Fleischer?
Actually, you, you're traveling in a vehicle. You're, you're no more than four to five feet off the ground. And I think about, I've seen what they've done in the Carolinas, as Chairman O'Brien has brought up, as well as yourself, but when you're traveling, just going north here to Melbourne, you have to pause for a second to see what they've done in Palm Bay, which is a public-private partnership with DOT's permission, and I don't think they're writing any checks, but we have to work with them very carefully, as it is the DOT property. Something as simple as what, what they've done in Palm Bay caused you to stop, caused me to get off. I go there for gas. If, if, I, I automatically look at the gas needle when I see that sign. I don't know why, I just caught myself. The minute I see Palm Bay, I have enough gas for the trip, I get off and buy gas there. Absolutely. It's very compelling, but I believe that low is our friend. We're, we're in vehicles, other than the tractor trailers, everybody's on, on the ground level, so I, I don't necessarily agree with the, the height suggestion.
Oh, I'm not talking about 30 foot tall, I'm just saying that when you come down that bridge, for you to see a monument style like that, it'd have to be, only be 100 foot past the bridge, otherwise you'd hardly see it, and, you know, that's the only part, part that I was getting. The reason that I brought that up is, when I went to visit Ocean City this summer, I mean, it was really a funny sign on both sides of the bridge, coming and going, it basically said the same thing. You know, on the way in, welcome for, welcome, and on the way out, you know, thanks for coming, and it literally said, hope you dropped your wallet.
I mean, unless we wanted to a cost factor, the same way as a, a Florida theme park, who also has a site here in Vero Beach, they have these grand thresholds, they're very eye-catching.
And expensive.
That's a little on the pricey end. But I, I think something like this, I don't think we should alter the process that Rich has been working on, staff's been working on for the past year, as to figure out what would be the best solution. It does take time, but I believe that they're well, well-received appointments, and I agree with Commissioner Flory that it's, it's a long time coming, even just for a welcome sign. There can be other suggestions, and I encourage that. If we can get, get some funding and some additional ideas for enhancement, I think it could also complement the efforts, but I do believe that we need the markers, and I do, I do like the presentation that you gave, Rich.
And Mr. Chairman, and this is one of the things of tying in some input with the chamber, whether on the sign you have a tagline, live, work, play, or something that, I know in the report, there was, in the, not direct branding, but some theme language that, that could be included, and I think made part of the sign to, you know, if you see the sign in Indian River County, it means all something to us, but people driving by it, it may not make them think a little, a little further, but, but make sure we get the input from, from those folks that, that worked on that, which would, also went through the EDC group, is maybe get a little feedback from them as well. But I think the idea of having it the shape of the county, we'll recognize that, but somebody new to the area won't realize that's the shape of the county, but I think that's kind of a, a nice touch to it.
I like it.
That, that I didn't, I'm not a good graphics-y person, but you look at it, go, oh, that's kind of catchy. But I think getting the right font, the right wording, if there's a tagline, yes or no, I think you've got enough surface area to work with, and then being able to theme it by whether the different veneers that you put on it in different locations, that adds another, I think, great way you can template it, but then kind of do the window dressing on the, on the balance of it. So it's good.
Okay.
So, so maybe after, at some point, you can make a few visits, and then probably kind of route things through, Rich, for ideas, or if you see some funding sources, because if we get the grant for one, we still have a number more we need to do. So get the concept trued up, and then, then we just have to figure out how to pay for them.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners Zork.
Thank you for your input, Jay.
And Commissioners, that concludes our agenda. Does anyone have any closing comments?
Go vote.
Go vote for the happiest seaside town.
You could do that once every minute.
Once every minute, so I know what I expect y'all to be doing the rest of the day.
Wow.
All right, and with that, we stand adjourned.